We're rolling.
Okay, so I will call the regular work session of the Oregon City Commission to order for Tuesday, February 9th, 2016. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shox.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Polly.
Here.
Commissioner Mangleberg is absent this evening, and Mayor Holliday.
Here. So, future agenda items, anybody? Okay, moving on. Discussion items, Clackamas Park Boat Ramp Hydrology Study Report, and this is by...
That's me, sir.
How come we don't put who the staff person is on my agendas anymore?
It's on there.
Where? Oh, there it does. I'm sorry, I missed it. Mr. Archer, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Commissioner, first I'd like to introduce Hans Hadley of West Consulting. Come on up, and Hans is going to be doing the majority of this presentation here. Just a quick background for you. So, as you well know, we've... Clackamas Park Boat Ramp has been closed down for some time now. It actually closed in December of 2013, so a little over a couple of years. And that's due to... It was closed down due to the damage and undermining caused by the high water flows and the changing current in the river there at that site. Because of the pretty significant safety risk to ramp users, we made that decision in consultation with the Oregon State Marine Board, who are partners on the boating facilities. With the Marine Board's financial assistance, actually 100% paid for by them and some of their other funding agencies, we were able to receive a grant to fund a hydrology study over the last year. And the West Consultants was selected to do that study for us. The purpose of that study was to evaluate, basically, the hydrology of the river and to develop some, both short-term and long-term, potential solutions for us to consider in terms of getting boating access reopened. So, it's important to note that though we have another boat ramp just a little ways up the Willamette River at Sport Craft Ramp, we still very much have the need for this access to be opened, to be reopened, as it's... That's been very... Made very clear to us through the amount of information that we have, the feedback from the community, from the boating community, the Marine Board. I would very much like to see that site reopened, and again, they tend to be the major funding partner for that site and our other boating sites. So, the West Consultants, Hans Hadley, again, was selected to do that process for us. We've been working on that. Hans and his team have developed the technical reports. Those are... There's a couple of different written reports that were attached to your agendas, and that information is available. But what we'd like to do is have Hans give you a... Drop down that screen. Thanks, Katie. Just give you a kind of a quick walkthrough of what we've got there, what our options are, and then we'll kind of wrap that up with some sort of final comments and, of course, questions. So, I'd like to turn it over to Hans Hadley at this point.
Thanks, Scott. Get the presentation up.
Getting there. It'll come up in just a second, Hans. What's that? I can't tell if your light's on in front of you. Yeah, I just checked.
Yeah, it's on. We're good to go. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say that, yes, it was a team of us, both with the city, the Marine Board, and also KPFF was on our team there, a general civil firm. So, we started that process, I think it was kind of late in the summer, looking at the site. So, basically, kind of as a reminder, here's some photos right after the damage. You can see that there's quite a bit of material that's missing from underneath the ramp here. And then some of the precast planks were flipped up and moved off of the supporting rails and gravel underneath. So, basically, this type of a ramp, it sits on rails, and... But between, like, here's a metal rail that it sits on, and here's a cross piece that it sits on, there's supposed to be compacted gravel underneath, and that's really what provides the support for the panels up above. It's not just the metal rails. They're not meant to be loaded without the support underneath, because they'll probably crack or break. And you can also see that they use a tongue and groove type of a system to help hold them in place from one to the next. So, in order for these things to stay in place, they just rely on the weight of the planks themselves and the protection from the sides. But what happened is, is we lost a lot of material on upstream side. Whatever riprap was there washed away the material underneath, and as soon as that gap opened up underneath, the water was able to get up and just kind of flip those panels up and out of the way. So, what we're... One of the things we did is we wanted to look at what's been going on at this site, why has there been problems? And one of the things that we looked at was the historic photography through time to see how things have changed along this stretch of the river. And one of the most dramatic features that we noticed was this kind of bar, this gravel bar, that's been growing on the opposite side of the ramp. So, putting more pressure and making the water want to flow closer and closer to the ramp at the higher flows. The other thing we did is we developed a 2D hydraulic model, so we could kind of understand how fast the water would be going through there during high-flow events, and basically, what's going on hydraulically. And this happens to be for a 100-year flood on the Clackamas River and a 10-year flood on the Willamette River. And the reddish areas are the areas of the highest velocities. You can see up here, there's a little chart, there's around nine feet per second, some of the higher values. But you can see that the bridge here really is a squeeze point, where the water has squeezed through the structure, and it's accelerated through there, and there's high velocities. And those high velocities continue all the way down to the ramp, and they start to become dissipated as you pass, as you get a little further downstream. So, this is an example of hydraulics at a pretty extreme event. But it's one that we would certainly like a ramp to be able to survive. Oh, the other thing is, let me flip back, is the other thing is, we also use this to try and understand if we're not going to replace the ramp at its current location in the long run, where would be a better place potentially to put a new ramp? And what we found actually is, there's kind of an area right in here that seems to be a pretty good spot, that you're getting far enough away from these higher velocities. Plus, this bank line right from about here all the way out to here is already riprapped, and so it's already protected from erosion, so you wouldn't have to face the same issues that you're facing over here where there's no protection.
So, did you take into account the fact that the upstream island is probably going to go away?
This island up here?
Yes.
Well, there's not really a whole lot we can do about it from a modeling standpoint, as far as that goes. But the fact remains that this bridge is still an area that's squeezing the flow through, and if this did change, there could be a different flow path for the water to come through here, possibly.
Because there, I mean, that's going to change. It's part of the Cove Project, so...
Yeah, I know now, I don't think anybody provided me any plans or details about what that change would be.
Again, they already have dredging permits for that.
Yeah. So, no, I haven't seen that. That would have been interesting to know that.
So, Hans, did you also, if you're looking at a replacement ramp, was the Willamette studied at all, just around the corner, right down here at the park? They have the relocation of the ramp maybe on the Willamette?
Yeah, we didn't really talk too much about putting it along here. I know that Sport Craft isn't too far away along up here, but I think the major issue is, is that... One of the things that we looked at is, as you go further this way, you're going to be influenced by more and more debris coming down during high flows. There's a lot of piles of debris right up in here, so that was one of the reasons we didn't want to go any further out in here. We kind of talked about it internally with the Marine Board and with the folks at the city, but didn't really explore a ramp along the Willamette. We thought because the parking area is already here, that that could be... That would be a pretty major change to move the boat ramp that far away.
But the park goes way farther the other direction, beyond that arrow.
Yes, it does, right. But you do have existing parking for trailers in this area right in here. And, you know, one of the things, obviously, is you don't want to spend so much money, basically, creating a whole new parking lot for trailers and trucks, but...
So, you think that where the RV park is right now, the ramp could be out of... I'm just, we're trying to explore all the options here, because we're going to be asking the questions, and that kind of came up, that maybe if the RV park wasn't there, and that turned into parking, fisherman parking, that that could be where the ramp is. So, just kind of exploring that a little bit.
Yeah. We do have some bathymetry data up in that area, so we could potentially look there as a possibility. You know, we'd have to get back together with the folks at the city and the rest of the team members at the Marine Board to see if that was something that they thought would be worth exploring or not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Let me just add one thing real quick. So, to this discussion point that Ron right now, as Hans is going to... His presentation's going to go through in the next couple of minutes here, is we're looking at really kind of a short-term thing and then the longer-term thing.
Right.
What you're talking about is the longer-term issue.
Yeah, okay.
And we've got time to... While you'll see what our recommendation is to be still on the Clackamas River side, although the location has changed, if this is somewhere that things seem to be heading or some new information with regard to the RV park or whatever, we could certainly revisit that. So, just keep in mind, though we have a recommendation to replace the ramp on the Clackamas River, that's the long-term piece. The short-term piece is, we're trying to get the existing ramp reopened, and we've got some solutions to show you to get that done sooner versus later. So, there's that, kind of keep that, just keep that in mind, is what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I brought the replacement ramp up just because of the fact that we had the model, and I could show you kind of the areas that we were considering that would be potentially a better area, but we'll get to those as well. As far as the repair goes, it's essentially, take the ramp apart and put it back together as in, you know, short explanation. But essentially, we remove all of the existing precast concrete planks, and as they're pulled out, we would cull out the bad ones, the ones that the parts of the tongue or the groove are broken off, and put those to one side and keep the good ones in another pile. I think in the specs, we had room for six new precast planks to be made. So, we're assuming that there's probably going to be four to six that are going to get tossed, because they're not any good. The other piece of that is that the newer planks are going to be made to the newer specifications that have more reinforcing in them, and they'll also have a built-in hollow tube kind of channel for... So, when they're all stacked together, you can run a piece of rebar through all of them so that they all kind of lock together. So, those newer planks would be placed at the bottom where the most vulnerable area is. And then, we would then replace the existing planks back and work our way up, and we would end up leaving a gap at the top that then we would do a cast-in-place pore of concrete, reinforced concrete there that tie everything together. Also, there would be some pretty extensive riprap placed around the base of the new ramp. So, you can see in kind of a cross-section view and in profile view that there would be some pretty significant riprap rock that would be placed around to protect the sides and the base of the ramp.
I think you were suggesting going to a different size, too, weren't you, than what was there previously?
Yeah, this is, I think this is Class 2000. I think there was Class 700 there. That, so 2,000-pound rock versus 700-pound rock, so it's a little bigger. And it's about eight feet deep from top to bottom, so it's a pretty good excavation and quite a bit of rock. So, now, keep in mind that when... The direction that we were given when we started this was, it needs to last five years. So, I think we got something that will last five years, but, you know, that doesn't mean that if we have a 100-year flood that comes through right after we do it, that it couldn't cause problems. So, it's a risk thing, so...
Well, anytime you build something on the edge of a river, it's a risk, especially in Oregon.
This is very true. So, that's the repair plan. It's pretty, really pretty straightforward. I think the folks at the city are in the process of trying to get the permits at this point. I don't know, Scott, if you want to talk about kind of the timeline for the repair?
Oh, let me catch that at the end as I summarize. We'll kind of, just to sum up what we're proceeding with.
Sounds good. Okay, so, let's see, next. So, next, I'm going to run you through kind of some options for the replacement, permanent replacement. The first one was essentially a ramp that's angled slightly downstream with a two-way in and out, basically driveway from the existing parking area that would incorporate a new area for removing the straps and getting everything ready to go. You'd turn in and then back down the ramp. It's a single... It's a wide, single-lane ramp. It's basically the same width as what the current ramp is. And then there would be some handicap parking area in here for folks with trailers. And then, but most people would end up coming back out to the existing parking area and parking here, and we would recover a few spaces, get some extra space in here from... Because that's not needed anymore as the area to turn around. And then we would utilize the existing area for basically tying the straps back on and getting everything ready to head out, which is currently right at this location. Option two is basically the same thing, except for a straight ramp. It makes it a little easier to turn up here, but I think the ramp ends up being... It's a little more difficult for boaters to get in and out with when the ramp is completely perpendicular to the current versus somewhat more angled. So, this was... It was a quick option, and the Marine Board kind of pretty quickly said, "No, it's probably not a good idea." Option three is basically the same as option one, except for we're doing a two-lane ramp. We're already here, let's maybe make it a little wider and give the opportunity for more use. The one issue with this, even though you've got two lanes, there's still the kind of the one-way in and one-way out, and so it can get a bit congested with this option. So, the fourth option, which ended up being the preferred option, was to do a loop road, basically a one-way in loop and come on back out. And then with, again, with the two-lane ramp as being preferred.
It takes up a lot of park.
Yeah.
A lot of park.
Yeah.
And we are very protective of the parks.
Yeah, and that's, I heard that for the Parks Commission meeting as well. One thing that does happen is, is that a lot of the asphalt that's currently there, that the road is closed, it's a walking path, would be removed. So, you would gain some of that back as more grass and riparian area. So, that would be one benefit that would kind of offset some of that. So, and this option was the one that was kind of floated by the Marine Board themselves. They thought that this would be the best, you know, and their view is, how do we get boaters in and out as quickly and painlessly as possible? And then you guys have to kind of work that out as far as the park usage and stuff, so...
So, Hans, you mentioned that easier boat access into the water when it's perpendicular...
An angled ramp, actually.
With its angular, so then, but isn't there something to be said for the current, when it hits the angular and angled ramp instead of the perpendicular one, too?
As far as erosion?
Yeah, as far as taking the riprap out.
Yeah, one of the things is, is that so the far end of the ramp will stick out into the river just a little bit more, so that's... And could potentially be elevated above the bed a little bit more. So, that's one thing we did look at, but what we also did is, when we decided to go this route, we also pulled the ramp back in a little bit further, so that I think actually the distance from this edge to here is about the same as that first alternative where we were just going straight out. So, what that would entail is actually potentially a little bit of dredging happening right here off this end of the ramp near the shoreline. Don't think that that's going to be a major issue. This isn't an area that you would expect much in the way of deposition. It's on the outside of the bend. It's really where you're going to see more scour than deposition going on. The deposition's obviously going on on the opposite side of the river. So, I think if we did remove some material, the likelihood that it would deposit material back in there would be pretty low. But there's, any time you have a ramp, there's always the potential for some maintenance that needs to be done.
Well, the single-lane ramp is, we know that this is... We don't like to use that word temporary in Oregon City, because we've had a few temporary structures here. But when you start looking at this number four, this looks like it's more of a permanent deal, because you're tearing into the park and everything, and if it's just a temporary deal, you really hate to put that much...
Well, this isn't temporary.
This is a replacement.
This is the long-term replacement idea. So, when this gets done, this old ramp gets removed.
Right, okay.
Yeah. And actually, one of the, in the cost estimates, we actually, the riprap that's being used for the repair would actually be recycled and reused at the new ramp. So, yeah, the old ramp is removed, the parking lot gets redone, and then this is the new permanent replacement ramp. So, this is the five, six-years-from-now ramp.
Just a quick comment on the concerns that were some of you just raised about the amount of park space that this preferred option takes up. And we certainly recognize that. That was, that's been part of our discussion. We presented this to the Parks and Rec Committee a couple weeks ago, and they had some of the same concerns, just again, that to keep in mind a couple of things. One, we want to, looking at the long-term solution, we want to make it the most usable ramp possible, because that's going to be built for, you know, many years to come, kind of a thing. So, we were thinking in terms of best usability, and that's where this circulation pattern came from. As Hans already mentioned, some of that river frontage, and then including the old ramp being taken out, will be restored. So, we actually gained back kind of some areas right now that are not really what you'd say is landscaped or, you know, a vegetated area. And then that green space in the middle of the circulation pattern, if you want to kind of put the arrow on that.
Yeah, right in here.
That doesn't become asphalted. That's still green space. So, just letting you know that that's, you know, that certainly, it's, as Hans mentioned, it's going to have to be a decision we'll make that, you know, do we want to go with what is viewed as the best option for getting boaters in and out? Or do we want to preserve, you know, the most green space and kind of find a balance there? So, that's something that we'll need to consider.
So, balancing that, gaining the beach, gaining parts of the area of the park to kind of mitigate what's lost, I think that's, you know, interesting argument, but no one's going to sit at a picnic table in that island and eat lunch. You know, when you go down to that park, the parking area and the boat ramp is a different part of the park. It's a different experience. If you go down there to boat, you go there. If you go down there and enjoy the park, you don't go there. And so, now you're extending that. That beach area, you know, and that island are basically a turnaround that's not really, even though it's grass, it's not a place that people are going to go and enjoy the park. It's part of that whole parking lot structure, and people are going to go into that other grassy area to enjoy that, which is now at least a quarter smaller than it was before. And I think that's going to be a huge challenge to overcome with the public. I think I have a tough time with any of these scenarios at all because of that point. So, I think, you know, you have this whole park, including the RV park, and even lots of land beyond that that's we own, that's not utilized in any way, that could be a ramp onto the Willamette. We could, you know, how we figure out what the RV park looks like in the future, which we don't know, that all could be designed in that area without even touching that part of the park. And it's hard to know that until we know the future of that area of the park. But even beyond the, we tend to forget that there's park beyond the RV park. It goes way down.
Yeah, it does.
And, you know, have we thought about all the logistics of all the different parts of the park? So, I think, you know, I mean, I'm excited and support having a fix to the current boat ramp and getting that resolved so that we can have that open. But I think the discussion of the permanent solution is going to, probably needs to be broader with all these other considerations, because it's hard to make a decision about that ramp until we know what's happening with the parking lot across the street or before we know what's happening with the RV park and all that, but...
Correct. So, again, let me, I think for purposes of expediting our conversation here, so we don't get too wrapped up on that part of it, I, we hear your concerns very much, certainly some things that we'll need to think about. We obviously have, I've been thinking about all the, kind of the broader ideas of, you know, what is going to happen with all the park, but the assignment that we gave just to Hans was, you know, just explore the options with what we know right now, and then we can always, you know, if we need to, we can revisit. Did you have the slides with the cost projections on these?
Oh, yeah, I believe I did, yeah.
Just to kind of sort of try to wrap things up here. So, what I want to focus on and make sure we don't forget, the most immediate thing that we have in front of us is we're committed, working with the Marine Board, to do what we can to get the existing ramp reopened, even if it's just for a span of a few years, make that investment. And the cost estimate there...
So, when are we planning on doing that?
Yeah, so what we're working on is, so you see the cost estimate, the Marine Board is working on the financial part of it and seeing how much money they can put together in some type of a package to offer us. The part that we're working on immediately is, and that, you know, commission direction assumed here, if that's where we want to go. The permitting is the key on the timeline question, Mayor, and that, we are, in fact, we're meeting tomorrow morning. Some of my team and I, my staff team and I are meeting with some of the permitting agencies to review whether we could make this summer's in-water work period to do the temporary repairs.
So, we can't get it done before the spring or season?
No. We'd be fortunate to get it done in this calendar year, so...
Okay.
What we're looking at is, because you have limited in-water work periods that you can do construction...
July 1 to August 31.
Yeah. Best-case scenario would be that we'd be doing the work this summer, and that's, I want to emphasize best-case scenario, and be careful about how I say that, because the permits are what is going to guide that decision as well as the funding. I think the Marine Board, I believe, will be able to help us put together the funding package. If we're not able to get the permits done in time for this summer's work period, that means we'd be waiting until 2017's work period, and it'd be closed for basically another year plus a few months. Not ideal, not what we're hoping for. We're doing everything we can to work with the permitting agencies, and I'm talking about Corps of Engineers, Department of State Lands, Fisheries, et cetera, everything we can within our power to basically accelerate that process to get this work done this year if possible. So, we'll know that in the relatively near future. We'll certainly report back to the commission and keep you informed about that process, because we are hopeful, but we've got to be realistic as well, so...
Okay.
And then, again, just to kind of wrap up with the long-term discussion, I'm hearing some concerns and feedback about what the, where the options led, and I think we'll all revisit with Hans about some of that in terms of how we, and the Marine Board, as far as how we bring that discussion back to you with some other thoughts that have been brought up tonight.
Can you go back to that last slide? So, it seems to me that in this particular option, somebody looked to see exactly where all the trees were.
Yeah.
And then you plugged it down right on top of it. So, it seems to me that if this was going to be an option, you need to pull it either right by 50 feet or so or push it left.
Yeah.
Well, there's actually an existing asphalt roadway through here, and we tried to actually align it with that existing pathway as much as we could. We're trying to get far enough away from, so this is the transition from the beach to the riprap.
Right.
And it's kind of fallen apart, and we didn't want to get too close to that, because there could be some continued erosion happening in here. So, we wanted to get further away than, you know, being right in here. But then we didn't obviously want to go too far away down this way either, because you're getting into the debris issues with the Willamette, plus you're also getting further away from the parking.
Well, I just think that you guys need to go back and look at some other options. Carol?
So, I understand that these options are geared at just what's best for the boat ramp and the fishermen and the logistics of it. But I have a hard time really thinking about it until I know the big picture of the park. So, I think for me, it would be beneficial to know what the plans are for the park. There's been parking issues. There's been issues with the lot, the city lot that's been for sale across the... been for sale across the street, being used for, by fishermen, and we've talked before about maybe expanding parking in the park and how we can do that, and still keep our green space and still keep our trees. And so I think that's an important part of the conversation. I don't think these should be totally separate. I think we need to include the thought of the park with the boat ramp, the permanent boat ramp.
And again, to remind the Commission, we have that in your goals for the two-year vienna that we're in, and I, we had that scheduled for the second half of our work schedule, but we'll, we're going, we'll be revisiting that and we'll be talking about that.
Okay, we need to wrap this up and move on.
So again, the short-term thing is our focus immediately, we'll be, we'll be talking more about that, and then we'll revisit about the long-term discussion. Keep in mind, the short-term fix, as Hans said, we hope will get us through about a five-year period so we can work towards that permanent solution, which as you can see too, is about a million-dollar price tag, and we've got to figure out the financing part. So we've got some things to do, but, but thanks, your feedback has all been very helpful, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Ed.
Thanks. So, we're off to 16-075, maximum fine for removal of a heritage tree or stand. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening Commissioners. So as you recall, at our last City Commission meeting, we had a discussion, and you approved the first reading of the ordinance for the revisions to the heritage tree code. While we were going through that, we, we needed to amend that to reference back to the appropriate civil penalty for removal of a heritage tree or a stand, and it's currently has a maximum fine of $300. And so I think I want to just start off by saying, this is different than what we saw in Waterboard Park. While there was an impact on a heritage tree stand, you also had a trespass and timber harvest in there. So this is more focusing on, a citizen comes in and decides they want to designate a heritage tree or stand on their private property, not realizing, or a new owner comes in and they cut down a tree that's been designated as a heritage tree. What should we do in that situation? And is $300 the appropriate civil fine if we decided to pursue that? Right now, about $300 is what we charge for a mitigation tree, which is what we've calculated for the purchase of a roughly two-and-a-half-inch caliper tree and planting of that tree and some slight maintenance. And, and so really, we're just here before you tonight, just because of what was going on, and like I said, I wanted to separate the two issues, because they are different. This isn't the maximum fine that we can charge because someone trespassed and cut down 20 trees. That's a different matter, there's a trespass issue.
Someone's private property.
This is someone's private property, and it's difficult, because we were trying to make this, it's property owner-driven, we were trying to incentivize it, to get the word out. So how much of a stick do you use as well if someone decides to take down that tree without going through the procedure that we have codified? And I could certainly see, you know, a bit more of a fine for that, but, you know, I leave that to you for your discussion. It's interesting, because usually when you nominate a tree on your private property, you realize it, you take care of it, you know what you're getting into.
As long as you're the owner.
As long as you're the owner. There are covenants recorded against it on the property, not that everybody reads their deeds, to realize what is or is not on, easements exist. And so, I could certainly see 500 bucks, $600 as being.
I was headed to the 500-dollar mark myself. It's got a sting a little bit, but, you know, accidents can happen if a person didn't know about it, and, but then again, we want, we don't want to set a, let that be a precedent, you know?
It is private property, and it's a voluntary program, and it's something the homeowner brings, you know, to the forefront, saying, I want to participate this in this. So yeah, the only thing I can think of is if the home is sold, and it should be in the deed, it should be something that the realtor should have to disclose to them also, something that comes with the property, so.
I think one of the things too here is, we don't offer very much in terms of incentive. In the Planning Commission memo, they talked about maybe revisiting what we could do to incentivize private property owners to designate heritage trees or stand on their properties. And right now, you know, we cover the recording fee, that's a pretty minimal investment. You know, if we were to get into a more aggressive incentive program where we were spending more public funds, you know, I could see this fines being more higher relative to that. So this is, it's a tough one, because like I said, we did, the original intent of this was to educate the community about the importance of heritage trees and try to create an incentive program, or a program for property owners that wish to follow that, and so, you know, how much of a stick do we put on that?
I guess I would kind of think if you, if you were basing, the $300 is based on replacement of a tree, even though the tree wouldn't really be replaced on that property, but it's a loss of a tree and a gain of a tree, which is kind of a wash, so where's the fine? Right, so I think, you know, doubling that or having it a couple hundred dollars on the side of the replacement of a tree, I think is, is then, you know, whether it's $100 or $200 on top of 300, I think then, I would see it that way, is, the $300 is to replace a tree for the city somewhere else in the city, because that property, you know, is kind of giving the city a tree in terms of a heritage tree. So that gets us another tree to replace it, but, you know, is that, then that's kind of, you know, and it just, you know, the fine is just a wash with that, so, I don't think it would need to be higher than that.
Yeah, just wondering if there's any way to notify new owners, obviously the realtor may not do that.
Right.
But if there's any way the city could, whenever, I don't know if the city ever sees any of the, all the transactions that go on.
Like nail a plaque to the tree?
Huh.
Maybe not quite that.
Yeah.
They have to go through the permitting process to take down a tree.
On private property.
No, but as far as the sale of the property, Carol's what I was thinking about, if there's some way to notify new owners, if the realtor doesn't do it, if there's some way that automatically kicks in.
Well, I.
And I don't know how that happens.
That sounds impossible.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
So I think that the incentive should be on incentivizing people to have heritage trees.
Yeah, that's the other part.
More of them, and instead of being punitive. So, we could definitely increase it a little bit, if you think it needs to be more to truly replace the tree, but I think really the emphasis should be on incentivizing.
Correct.
This should be a positive program, not about punishing, because this is private property. We're not talking about public property.
Yeah.
That's a whole nother issue, which we'll get to.
Correct, correct, yeah. Okay, so I guess I'm hearing this. We'll come back with a recommendation on an appropriate fine when we bring back the ordinance, and we'll need to read it again at that point, so.
Well, I have, I have one other problem with this, and that is, you know, we start getting all these designations going on, and then, you know, we also have the metro standards for infill and all that sort of thing, so, you know, there should be a process here where if property changes its zoning designation or something, that there's a way to remove those trees? Just because, you know, if you're taking, you know, say some property up there that's, take Barb Streeter's place, she's got four and a half acres in between Holmes Lane and Mountain View, that's going to develop at some point in time, and there are several large trees on that property. And if some of those were designated, there is no process in the system to be able to undesignate those trees.
Well, that's a very good point. If you want to subdivide your property or something, all of a sudden it's hamstringing you from selling a portion off.
It's right in the center of the.
And it, there goes your retirement.
Think that.
It could happen.
It certainly could, and I think that's, you know, where we typically have seen this so far on lots that aren't going to be subdivided, or in the case of the Soil and Conservation District, you know, they decided that, they wanted that, they thought that the oak, or the, I forget what type of tree it was, but there's a tree on their property that they thought should be protected from development. They made that decision as a property owner, and we'll have to, it'll be part of the sale. We can look into that, and maybe as we're working on the, you know, if there's an incentive program, how to deal with that issue.
Okay, thank you.
All righty.
Is that it?
For, yes, that.
For this?
Yes.
Okay, so, next one is 16-076, the Oregon Legislature Senate Bill 1573. I assume this is you, Mr. Conklin?
It is, thank you again, Mayor. So, currently, the legislature is considering a bill that would require a city to annex territory without a vote of the citizens. Upon receipt of a petition for annexation that is submitted by all of the owners of the land to be annexed, provided the land is located within an urban growth boundary and is or will be subject to an acknowledged comprehensive plan of the city. This is in complete contradiction to our Oregon City Charter that requires all annexations to go to a vote of the people. We have historically informed the legislature of our opposition to any legislation that would circumvent our charter, and I am proposing to remind the Commission of that, or the legislature of that again. I think the difficulty this year, historically, this has been a standalone bill. There's a lot of horse trading go on in this short session. One thing, parts of the region have been trying to get passed is some type of an affordable housing component, as it's related to inclusionary zoning, as well as there's been discussions about what to do with kind of the area, not necessarily all of Stafford Basin, but in that area down there. I have a feeling that this may get caught up in that larger deal-making, of which we potentially won't have much sway in that discussion. But I do think it's important that we do remind the legislature of what our charter requires us to do.
Yeah, that's all we can do.
So I just wanted to inform the Commission that I was going to continue with our historic practice.
Well, there are some issues with this in Lane County, too, so it's.
It's not just us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe there's, off the top of my head, there's over 28 or so local jurisdictions with local requirements for annexation votes.
Okay.
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 That's all I have on that issue, unless we'd like to discuss it some more.
That's it?
No, I got nothing on that.
Nope. Continue, Mark.
All right. Senior Manager Report.
I'll keep it very brief. I would like to congratulate our senior accounting technician, Melissa Goss. She is the new mother of a baby girl today, seven pound, one ounces, Thea Astrid Lockwood. So I just wanted to pass that along.
Good.
Very happy for her.
Who won the pool?
Marcy.
Marcy, the utility customer service manager, won the pool. I think I put in the most votes, but lost badly, so she gets bragging rights for baby prediction, too. It's horrible.
So Wyatt was the house. Is that it?
That's all.
So I just have one quick thing to report. I'm not sure if all of you know, but Jim Band has been spending every day down in Seaside, helping those guys out. The chief was pretty seriously devastated, because the officer who was killed was one of his close friends, as well as a workmate, so Jim has just done an outstanding job making arrangements and talking to other police agencies and getting folks down there to do the patrol duties and be able to make sure these guys have enough time off to be able to deal with that. I'm going down on Thursday evening, and I'll be at the memorial service on Friday. I have been in contact with the mayor, so.
Also, Chief Band, you know, who's been working very closely initially with the chief police, and then the support group that's there with the planning and trying to help with the day-to-day operations. On Saturday, I did have a conversation with their city manager, offering up any assistance we can through the process.
We had some of our officers down there.
We've had at least, Jim and at least one other officer down there every day.
And Chris Wadsworth is down there, too, so.
Oh, good.
And then we're taking patrol duties one day this week, I think.
I believe that they were able to have it so that their officers didn't have to come back till next Monday.
Yeah.
Good. That's good, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay? All right, anything else to give to the order? Then we're adjourned. So we're moving into executive session. Where did it go? Here you go. Pursuit of the ORS 192.660, Paragraph 2A, to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent.